Fifteenth meeting, I'm sorry, August 19th. Is that right? Thank you, 19th. Calendar in my mind's not calculating correctly. We'll pay bills in item number one, we'll consider the minutes in item number two and item number three is a resolution accepting the resignation of City Treasurer Robert Jaeger and appointing Jennifer Cornet as a City Treasurer for the City of Hoover. Any comments or questions from the body on that item? Item number four is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with AT&amp;T. Mr. Reeves?
Thank you, Mr. Lada. This resolution is to authorize the mayor to sign a non-reversible agreement with AT&amp;T. This is associated with the Little Valleydale Road widening project.
Any questions for Mr. Reeves on item number four? Very good, sir. Ms. Cobal here is here for item number five, resolution authorizing an agreement between the Parking Rec Board and Southeastern Conference.
Good evening. This agreement will extend our partnership with the Southeastern Conference to host the baseball tournament for four more years, beginning in 2025, and includes two additional one-year options for 2029 and 2030. This agreement also includes Phase III Hoover Met Stadium improvements that will be completed prior to the 2025 tournament.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Cobal? Or Mr. Pate? He probably knows more about this agreement dating back 25 years than anybody else. Any questions or comments? Item six, Ms. Cobal or Mr. Ryan come on down. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jefferson State Community College.
Hello, yes, this resolution is to establish a partnership with Jefferson State Community College to provide a work-study program for their students to come and do community service work at our recreation center and elsewhere in the Parks and Recreation Department. The library is also interested in participating in just such program.
Wonderful, new program, if I'm not mistaken, right?
It is a new program. It has been paused for quite some time. The library had this agreement many years ago, but they're rebuilding the program post-COVID and are just now moving from on-campus to off-campus options.
Great. Any questions for the gentleman on that item, number six? Thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
The XO is here from the Hoover Police Department to talk about item number seven, which is an agreement with Inmate Calling Solutions.
Good evening. Inmate Calling Solutions is the company that we have a contract with for the phone services in the detention center. This is expanding out a little bit. They're going to provide 45 tablets, no cost to the city. In turn, inmates get free law library access to religious information and so forth. So this is just an enhancement to that contract we already have.
Any questions for Mr. Fountain on item seven?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Alabama Fire College. I have Ms. Walker down for this item. I don't see her here. Chief, might you know anything about that one? Okay, we will save that for Monday night and we will...
I know a little bit about this one.
Okay.
So this is about the promotional testing that it's done before. So whenever they have a promotional testing, this is that agreement with the fire college for that.
Oh, so a renewal of the same agreement we've been under for?
Yes. But we can't go into details because it does talk about the tests, so.
Gotcha. Okay, I anticipate Ms. Walker will be here perhaps Monday night if someone has any other comments or questions on that. Item number nine is a resolution, amending resolution 818824 on live streaming services. Ms. Dickerson?
This is a resolution to amend the one that was presented and approved at the last meeting, and this takes out the eight years and leaves them up permanently.
Okay, any comments or questions for that item? Mr. Murphy is parking, so we will hold off on 10 and come back so he can address that item as well. Item number 11, resolution number 8205-24 requesting opinion from the Alabama Attorney General. This is an item that surfaced from our last meeting. Ms. Dickerson?
Yes, that is correct. This is from the resolution that we had on the agenda for the payment of legal fees. So this, and at that time, it was tabled and asked to get an Alabama Attorney General's opinion. So this is in regards to that.
Any comments from the body on item number 11?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
During that meeting, I felt I may not have been listening quite good enough, but I didn't feel that I received quite clear enough direction on our ability of the council to make that decision. But reading in the Hoover Sun, I want to read two paragraphs from the city attorney that Mr. Anderson wrote. The city attorney wrote in an email to Mr. Lada in October that he had spoken to the executive director of the Alabama Ethics Commission, Tom Allbritton, and the Assistant Attorney General and Chief of Opinions Division Office of the Attorney General, Ben Baxley. Both confirmed to me, that being Mr. Corley, that the question of whether to pay Steve's legal fees would be a factual question for the city council, Corley wrote. Corley also maintained that the city's payment of McClinton's legal bills would be legal if the council found that he acted in good faith within the line and scope of his official duties, city policies, and all existing laws and regulations, and thus the payment of such legal fees would serve a public purpose. The council is a proper trier of fact of public purpose according to the law. So I guess this is pretty clear that according to direction that Mr. Corley got from the Alabama Ethics Commission and the Attorney General's office, that it's basically up to the council body to determine if he meets those three criteria, and then based on our opinions of that, that's what they abide by. Mr. City Attorney, do I have that correct?
I have not, you know, looked at that email, and so I'm not sure exactly what that says. I would defer to, you know, to Philip on that as well, but I do believe under the policy, if you're going solely based on that, that the city council would be the actual trier of fact.
So I guess my question would be, do we still really need to seek the Attorney General's opinion? And if we do, I would also include the Ethics Commission on that resolution? Or do we feel comfortable enough, based on what we just heard, voting this up or down Monday night?
As was discussed at the last meeting, the Ethics Commission does not require a vote. Any elected official may submit that. The Attorney General's opinion does require a vote, which is why this one's on the agenda. So we can give it an up or down vote on Monday night based on what members feel about what you just read?
Sure, I just want to say that I may, as a member of the affirmative, to continue that motion originally, I may recall that vote to vote to see whether we're ready to vote that up or down. If we're not, and we, this body wants to continue to seek the Attorney General's opinion, I would ask, I know that doesn't require, but that we add the Ethics Commission on here?
That has been submitted already.
That has been submitted?
Yes, that's been submitted.
Reading the draft to the Attorney General, this is in no reflection of Mr. Corley, but I do feel that he may have a conflict of interest in this case, and I would ask that Ms. Danielson, as City Attorney, be the one to write that request.
She may have written it.
I did not.
Okay. Okay.
If we go down that route.
Sure. Okay, we'll leave the item on there and consider...
Can I ask another question? April, you might not have answered this, but these comments that Philip made in this article, how did he receive the information from these two entities? Was it an email? Was it a phone call? Do you know?
I don't know.
Can we find out? And if it was an email, can it be shared with all of us?
He'll be here Monday night, and we'll be back.
Is there a way to contact him in the meantime, that if this was an email, maybe he can share parts of the email, the whole email with the council, so we can read what these gentlemen said and how he received it?
I can surely ask him.
I think that would answer some of the questions.
And I will let you all know tomorrow, if that would work.
Thank you.
Mr. President, and I haven't asked Ms. Danielson, she may not be available, but maybe during the discussion of this particular resolution, we could have Ms. Daniel here to lead us during that discussion?
On Monday night? Is that what you're asking? I can certainly be present if you all need me to be.
That's just my opinion.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I have some challenges with the factual statement that is drafted by a city attorney that is attached as an exhibit to this resolution. In my opinion, the factual statement contains an unnecessary level of specificity that could be construed as an attempt to publicly embarrass the involved parties. It goes even farther into the facts than what happened at the council meeting, and I think that's not only inappropriate, but just really unnecessary in order to obtain an opinion. And so I would prefer that we are submitting something that is at a much higher level if we are going to be submitting something to the Attorney General's office. Mr. President, I also just heard you say that something has already been submitted to the Ethics Office. I was not aware of that. Is that the same factual statement that's been presented to us?
Very similar. And as I said, that could be sent by any member. A number of those can be sent, but that has been submitted by me today.
Right, so you...
That doesn't have to be voted on?
Not at all, no. That can come from any of the eight elected officials in the city.
But you elected to use the statement of facts that was drafted by the city attorney? All right.
As it was accurate.
Accuracy includes having to include all the pertinent facts, and one of my other problems with the statement is that it does not include all the pertinent facts. So one very important fact that was discussed at the meeting on Monday and has been in the news as well is, you know, that there was a policy, maybe not a written policy, but an expectation that was set for employees, that they were to notify the city administrator if they were contacted by city council members about matters of city business. And that was an inappropriate policy for the city to allow the administrator to have. It's a dangerous situation whenever you have a city employee who has the kind of power and control that would prevent an individual from being able to speak with a member of a governing body. And I have very serious concerns about that from a compliance and an ethics standpoint, and I believe that that satisfies the corporate purpose discussion that was had on Monday. And I think that that is a very important fact for any tribunal who is looking at whether or not this is ethical and legal for us.
Any other comments? All right, we'll return to item number nine. Mr. Murphy asks if we could revisit that for a question or comment on his behalf.
Yes. Okay, just a couple items, because I want to be, I want to do an edited version on Monday for the sake of time. But the council, this kind of do just a quiet, a little bit memory lane, because some was here from the public, some was not. Just real quick, one commitment again, that coming in 2016 is the ability to have transparency from a standpoint individuals could not make it to workshops by five and get on the road and get here by six o'clock. If I recall, it was a running joke that if it starts at six, you get here by 6:30, I mean, 6:03, you're wasting your time, and by 6:05, the meeting was over. So a lot of things were happening, and not many people had much understanding, because, you know, efficiency because of the meeting took place. So the goal was to have some form of a video, which was a, just an iPad in the back, you can hear, but you couldn't, well, you kind of hear, but you couldn't see much of what's going on. And y'all pushback on me, I want to say Mike Shaw might have led since he was an IT geek. Now he's the state representative, the charge, and for the most part, we spent roughly $2 million as a whole, I think over $300,000 for the system we have in place now. Keep in mind, we received a lot of pushback from the community about the amount of money we were spending for that. So it came at a cost, everyone was not happy with that approach as well, too. I receive emails on it, I'm only counsel, so I receive emails on it as well, too. But for the most part, that's what we moved forward to do. Now, one thing that was not covered was a process on how we were going to maintain records. That was something that needed to still take place. We got everything together, we put controls in place, we spent X number of dollars, but it still was a process of how we're going to put things, whether we keep it for two years, three years, five years, 10 years. That was never addressed, but it was known that that was going to have to come back up, period. And so I do commend our president for working to try to get some type of consistency. I think if you put another seven folks on the council, you're going to have a difference of opinion, like you should. And I want to say, last President Gene Smith used to always say, out of his 16 years on the council, the one he served with had their own voice and had their own mind, because it wouldn't block votes. And I appreciate that piece of it. I say I will say this, that in government, I always want to make sure I'm doing the right thing, listening to the public. Now, I may land on where I land on based upon the information, or I may have a change of heart as related. It was one particular item that Gene Smith stated, past president, about legislative intent. And again, that one, one of the things that kind of captured me, an ability to be able to go back and look at what was the intent of why council member X, a councilwoman X said this on that resolution would make me want to change my perspective. Hence, when the change was made from the eight year to the, it'll be on there permanently. So I did want to say that on that end, to make sure I'm very crystal clear when it comes to that piece of it. Again, I want to thank all the council folks for working. Some resolutions is quick, fast, in a hurry, some, we got a strong opinion, and we hash it out, and then you come back three or four months later and make additions to it. I think that's good government to do it in that form. So I didn't want to make, just make that statement, and yeah, feel free for the ones that was here prior and on, pushback on me any type of way, but we received quite a bit of calls about different things, and sometimes our community is with it, sometimes it's not, but it's for the betterment of the City of Hoover. So I did want to make that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We'll now take up item number 10, a resolution establishing the office of the city council and creating the role of city council administrator or assistant to the city council as an unclassified employee position. Mr. Murph?
So we are the sixth largest city in state of Alabama, and we are part-time council. And when you start looking at other cities, even smaller cities to us, they typically have not just one, not just two, but each council person has an administrator and a staff, right, to a certain regard. You know, we're very frugal as a council, we don't like to spend much money. But it's, at the same time, when you have in a six-large city, the ability to get in contact with us, and I think that's problematic when folks, we work a full-time job and folks can't have a person of contact to get in contact with a council member at eight, at nine, they got to wait until we finish up our meetings to be in contact with legislation-related matters. Now, again, the mayor's office is an executive branch, they handle operational, I think everyone understands that. But it is some legislation intended and things that we have to cover, and I think it behooves us to make sure we provide the best quality of life, not just for our residents, but folks that want to do business in Hoover, and it is one person, and it will serve at the direction of the city council office and the city council office alone. I have talked to the mayor, and it'll be an item that we'll put in the budget. And again, you still, everyone still have time to look at the job description and grade, things of that nature, but this, you have a sample on there, there'll be another sample coming. Please feel free to add, edit. I know Krista, being an attorney, she definitely read that thing up pretty, pretty, pretty good, but, which I appreciate it. So that's the purpose and the intent of the office of the city council, and you look around other cities, this is not something abnormal.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I talked today a little bit about, you know, you were telling me about the example, and I think it is something that's going to change over time, but I think it's very important for everyone on the council to consider that when you're talking about a specifically legislative purpose for this person, it serves the legislative branch, it's got to have, this person has to have autonomy. It can't be a situation where there is, you know, this person, this person serves the city council, but, and policy reports to the mayor in terms of review and disciplinary action and things like that, because a lot of times you have issues where you, where you get, where legislative and the legislative and the executive clash, and you don't want the person to be in a compromised position when their job is to represent the legislative branch of government. So that's something to consider as we hash off this job description, and we need to look at also the reporting structure, how we clean that up, and how we make sure that this person has that autonomy needed to be our voice in that room. So that's just something for everybody that I think is important to consider as we work through this process.
One question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Murphy, did you have on here what that pay scale will be, or is that to be determined by the budget?
Be determined by the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Along with the job description, so that'll... Again, so all feedback, you know, make sure you, inclusive, Wendy, as well as legal. I'll give a legal, I'm kind of hesitant of, I'm sure I can be put on there, but I won't give you, y'all know where I am, I won't give you a comment if it's something coming before public, but I'll work to ask legal anything that may impact it. Again, I want to make sure we're following our HR standards as well, too, and then also we need to work out, as Councilman Posey stated about the performance review, who would administer that, who would administer midterm reviews, and just all basic things, whether that's the president or pro temp. We'll have to hash all that out so we can, won't have any type of misconceptions moving forward.
So is your vision that we would amend this resolution once we have a final Exhibit A, or are we looking at this a little bit prematurely while we're still trying to hash all that out?
Well, the job description itself is, I think, maybe one of the basic ones that we can get in the budget and kind of see what that looks like. I feel comfortable that we can pass a resolution to have an employee report to the council, and then, and we can maybe come back and just approve whatever the job description is in the budget and the grade.
Okay.
Again, to your point, and I want to say, I think, by approving this is not going to set a particular job description and a grade, and we can't return back to it. All that'll be hashed out in the budget process. And then if the budget don't get passed for the person and the grade, then we won't have a person supporting the city council.
Any other comments on item 10? All right, we move to item 12, Mr. Martin? Rather than me sitting here reading through all of these, Mr. Martin, we're going to give you the autonomy of walking us through them one by one, is that all right?
That's all right. We have an incredible bumper crop of weeds this year, and this is a little abnormal to have this many at one time. Resolutions, items 12 through 24 are all declarations for nuisances of a variety of locations across town. Of course, we will go through each and every one of these just for the public's benefit. We have 103 Inverness Corners, 104 Inverness Corners, 105 Inverness Corners, 105 Inverness Plaza, 216 Squire Circle, 1828 Valgreen Lane, 2049 Sweet Gun Drive, 2060 Wood Metta Circle, 2128 Farley Road, 2504 Old Rocky Ridge Road, 3312 Green Valley Circle, 3425 Stroll Away, and 3486 Flintshire Drive. Each and every one of these is currently out of compliance. We will be checking between now and meeting time to see if anyone has had the opportunity over the weekend to cut their lawns, and we'll adjust the list accordingly if that happens.
Are any of these repeat offenders?
Some of these are. The Flintshire Drive location sticks out in my mind as one that we've... Oh, it's different, okay. Okay, I've got you. But yes, some of these, we do have a couple of repeat customers in the mix. And of course, we have a few that are in the commercial sector of Inverness on the docket. I did report some time back, a couple of weeks ago, that the Office Park has gotten its act together and has the organization revived that normally takes care of this maintenance, and things are looking good there. This is on the retail commercial side of things. I've got a couple of properties that are not taking care of the rides away adjacent to their tracks, and in some cases, the tracks themselves are out of compliance. So hopefully, we will get some movement on those and not have to go all the way through abatement, but we needed to start the process anyway.
Any questions for Mr. Martin on any of the declarations of nuisances, items 12 through 24? And then we have a few abatements, Mr. Martin, items 25 through 28.
Yes, sir, we have four abatements. Let's see, and these are second readings. 2125 Tyler Road, 2400 Savoy Street, 3469 Birth Tree, and 5303 Parkside Circle. And should these remain nuisances and the abatement is approved, we will go forward with cutting. We'll just note that we are about $2,400 left in our budget, so really hoping that we can eke to the finish line, but we're getting close.
Any questions for Mr. Martin on the abatements? Very good, sir. Stick around for item 29, please. Second reading of ordinance number 24-2656, International Park Drive, the PUD amendment.
Yes, sir, we have PUD amendment amending the development criteria for the single-family detached portion of the International Park planned unit development. This particular amendment is adding two additional single-family residential units to the entitlement for the development of the single-family detached sector, bringing that total of three maximum single-family units. This also alters the development criteria, the setbacks and the like for that sector.
Any questions for Mr. Martin on that item? I know we talked about it at length at our last work session at the first reading. No comments or questions? Item number 30 is a resolution granting conditional use approval for an indoor golf and teaching facility.
Yes, sir. This particular conditional use is related to an indoor commercial recreational facility seeking to get fully operational at 1218 Alfred Avenue, and this would include on-premise beer... And this would include on-premise beer and wine sales. I do have one negative comment that has been registered in writing to our office, and I will pass that on to the city clerk. But the planning commission, of course, reviewed this application and gave it a positive recommendation in their July meeting.
Any questions on the second reading of that item for Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. Stick around if you will momentarily. Item 31, Ms. Dickerson, is an accompanying resolution to item number 30 for the alcohol license for Mr. Thompson. Any comments on that?
There's no issues with this request from the city planner or the chief of police.
Very well. Any comments or questions for Ms. Dickerson or the police on item 31? Very well. We will have two first readings, Mr. Martin, beginning with item number 32, for abatement at 2660 Foot Hills.
Yes, sir.
Can I make one more comment about the alcohol license?
Yes, ma'am.
He doesn't have a comment if it's approved with the one before that. So he has no issues with this request if it's approved, if the conditional use is approved.
The resident, are you referring to the resident who wrote?
City planner.
Oh, the city planner.
If this isn't approved, then the alcohol license is no longer.
I understand. Yes, ma'am.
It'll just be withdrawn.
I follow you now. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Martin, item 32, abatement at 2660 Foot Hills.
Yes, sir. We have an overgrown property at 2660 Foot Hills Drive. We, too, will look over this between now and the second reading to see if it comes into compliance.
And then finally, item 32 is an ordinance to amend the Hoover Code to provide a two-year term of office for president and president pro temp. Mr. Murphy?
Very brief. This is not an uncommon practice. Cities and other agencies practice this. Even school boards have year evaluations and whatnot. So this will just be starting the next term. Of course, if passed, the president and pro temp and/or leadership, it'll be a mid-year election on behalf of the body to determine if they're moving in another direction or keeping the same leadership. And also, it gives the opportunity for the current leader to determine if they want to stay in that leadership role as well, too. Things do happen, but it's more so of a process, point of reference than anything else. And I think the better we can have processes in place, I think it makes us a very attractive city, and it helps with more sustainable and calm government by having it in this format. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? One question I have, Mr. Murphy.
Come on.
Would this prohibit the change of a president any time other than those intervals?
That'll be a decision that the council will have to make. Again, you know, my philosophy is different. I'm going to vote the same, you know, if I decide to vote for an individual in office, and those are the terms that I put in place, I'm going to stand by those particular terms. So I would say no, but again, I'm only one. So y'all make the determination though, so this will be every, the mid-year, beginning of term, mid-year of a term. But I'm one person, so y'all may want to add some language in there. And we need to verify if language already is in there. But it doesn't take away the fact that if the president wants to leave or step down, the mayor, the president would take that role as well, too.
Any other comments, questions?
I would ask, please, I mean, supply feedback before this comes up on Monday, on your stance on it.
Correct, and that is the first reading.
Yes.
Very well. Any other comments or questions? Very good. Thank you all for your attendance. We're adjourned.